This is Chair Kira O'Neil in pursuit to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law issued March 12, 2020. This meeting will be held using remote participation via go-to webinar. It will be broadcast live on Mansfield Cable Access and then rebroadcast throughout the week. This video will also be available on mansfieldschools.com. And I'd like to start the meeting with a roll call of attendees. Lynn?
I'm here.
Jen?
I'm here.
All right, Kira is here. Linda?
I'm here.
And Lauren?
Here.
All right, first on our agenda is public speak. I will now open for our 15-minute public speak. If you have registered and joined the meeting via go-to webinar, you now have the ability to submit your name in the questions box of your control panel, which can be found by clicking on the orange box with a white arrow. What do we call upon you? Please unmute your device, state your name, address, and speak. Public speak is limited to two to three minutes per person, and this is an opportunity for the public to voice your opinion. However, per policy, it is not a dialogue between the committee and the public. Diane, do we have anybody?
I am not seeing any. So I think we're all set. Oh, wait a minute, I do have one. I have Erica Maio, and hold on, I will unmute her. Okay, Erica, you should be able to speak.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Erica Miao. I had a fifth grader, a third grader, and a second grader in Mansfield at JJ and Robinson. I wanted to start by saying thank you for the work that you have done. But I also want to put on record that the way that school is going and the hybrid proposal that is out there is not working, is not working for my family and is not working for the majority of families that I've spoken to in Mansfield. I sent an email to both the superintendent and the school committee with the petition that we put out as a town or as a group of parents and just wanted to make sure that that is on record.
Again, thank you. Yes, we have, we have received your petition and we have reviewed it and there'll be discussion.
Thank you, Erica. And could I have your address for the public record?
Sorry, my street address?
Yes.
Seven Noreen Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that looks like that's all we have.
All right, next is communication. So let me just. Just give me one second. We have received a number of communications throughout this week. And we, what I wanted to do is just kind of summarize, basically, they came in, I would categorize them into three different themes. The first I would call just overall concerns, and we received two communications regarding that. We received three communications from parent, four, I'm sorry, four communications from parents that are advocating for a full return to school, so five days, full days for everybody. And the majority of the communications that we've received have been around this proposal for a different hybrid model. I mean, in that case, we have received approximately approximately 10 communications from different families regarding that. And then we do have, we received two other communications that were more formalized. One is the petition that Erica Erica just discussed, of which 286 signed that. And then we did receive a letter from the teachers at the Robinson, of which 20 teachers signed that. And I'm just going to summarize basically kind of what these petitions and letters are. So again, they are fairly lengthy, but from the, that we received from the Robinson parents, I'm sorry, the Robinson teachers, they wanted to propose a different hybrid model than what has been planned and has been been working on. So the, they summarized basically kind of the concerns that they saw. And they felt that the concerns can be remediated if they utilize a half-day hybrid model for the schools similar to those in neighboring communities, which I believe the reference is to Foxborough because that is, that's the only one around that is doing it. And they proposed that Cohort A attends every morning and Cohort B attends every afternoon. With some of the benefits they felt would be provided is that students would have daily live instruction from their teacher. With a daily attendance, teachers and children would learn routines at a quicker pace, allowing them to gain critical time. The at-home portion of the day would not be fully asynchronous, as specials could remain remote. And the expectations for independent practice could be explained in daily and in person, and the materials needed could be provided directly to the students. It would release the burden on our families who went to the current model would have to manage the content and schedule for three days per week. And from a health perspective, it would drastically reduce transitions, which requires sanitation and distancing, hallway travel, and the use of common areas where different cohorts would cross. They realized by making a switch like this is extremely significant for our school and our community, but they're asking what is best for the young students. And if the answer is there any way to make it work, they would have the full support from the staff of the Robinson. And again, it was signed by 27 teachers. And then we had the petition, which again was signed by 86 parents. About the petition, they petitioned all elementary students and especially K through three be in school every day. They understand the need for hybrid and think having our youngest learners in school half-day every day would be a huge benefit over the currently proposed two-days-in-three-days-asynchronous hybrid model. We believe that the best interest of our children's education is always to be in the classroom. Children would benefit from more two-and-a-half hour, more two-and-a-half hours of face-to-face explicit education than two days on and three days asynchronous. This will allow for them to grow their skills academically and socially in a developmentally appropriate environment. Half-days would allow teachers to teach all lessons in person, and asynchronous time can be the independent practice. More academics could be covered this way, though with the current hybrid model, and elementary kids would not be sitting in front of screens, but teacher support for three days a week. We see neighboring towns successfully implementing this schedule. Question why it's not happening in Mansfield? They say, go on to state that the model is supported, supported by the Mansfield Educators Association for the students at the Robinson for K through two, and they were asking people to share their own experiences or request half-day hybrid by emailing. So thank you for all the communications, you know, the information that we received from the, kind of the day-to-day experiences and the struggles that the families are experiencing is obviously is critical and critical that we try to alleviate these situations and really improve the education. I do want to provide just a little background on the development of the hybrid models for the schools. So, you know, as, as it seems like it was, you know, years ago, but really just a few months ago, so late spring and early summer, a district-wide committee was commissioned to develop the remote and hybrid learning models. This larger committee was comprised of teachers, administrators, parents, school committee members, and students for at least the higher-level grades across all the schools. And then each school then broke into their own committee to determine what was appropriate remote and hybrid models for their specific school. The plans were then presented to the school committee and the rec, and the plans recommended to us for the current hybrid model. So let me clear that there weren't other models that were brought to us. These are the plans that were in development since August. We are currently scheduled to return to school under hybrid model on October 15th, which is a week and two days away. And the reason I want to bring this background up is that, you know, we've kind of heard frequently over the last week that, you know, this is what everybody wants, and it's the school committee and the administration that have been against it. We were presented with only one model that was developed by each of the individual schools, and that is what we approved. So what I want, a couple of key things is throughout this whole process, I think we've emphasized that the, the development of these models is going to be fluid. So we're going back to school on October 15th in a hybrid model. The hybrid model on October 15th will probably not look like the same hybrid model that we have on December 15th, with hopefully, you know, our full, you know, with a full return to school of all the kids, you know, as soon as possible. But there are a couple of key things that I just want to, that we have to keep in mind as we closely look at all these alternative options. I guess the first thing is that there are over 800 students in the Robinson and approximately the same with the JJ. And, you know, we, the school committee administrative have committed to these families a specific hybrid plan, and their families in turn committed to us on whether they were going to be virtual or hybrid based on these parameters. So plans have been made by families to accommodate the specific schedule, and any dramatic changes to schedules really would require planning, and we would, you know, we would not need, we could not throw a dramatic change on families and not expect to be significant problems. I also just to give, I reviewed the plans of almost 90 districts today. And for the most part of those 90 districts, approximately 80 of them had the same hybrid plans as us. So what we're doing in Mansfield was not unusual. It's pretty much the plan that most people have gone to that, gone really out of the gate with. Couple of districts are doing a completely dramatic difference where they, you know, one, what Cohort A is in school one week, Cohort B is in school the other week, which was discussed, I know, by the individual schools, and they did not like that. A few districts did have, did have half-days like we're proposing. Most of them that I saw the half-days were, again, were for the younger elementary. Some had the same hybrid plan we had, but kindergarten and maybe K and one had the half-day models. So challenges are real and they're everywhere. I know, and I can understand it, and I, I'm not living it right now, and I've said from the very beginning, you know, parents of young children right now are saints, and you're, you're going through a battle right now, which hopefully when you're seeing on the other side, you're, you're going to go back and just kind of wipe your brow and hopefully have survived it. So I, I can't even imagine what you're going through. But that, they're everywhere. And the reality is remote schooling is not the type of education we want. Hybrid education is not what anybody wants, and neither one of them is going to be exactly what we had when we were in school. And we need to get the kids back full day when it is deemed safe by the state and by everybody else that we can do it. But what we need to do, and the challenge is for everybody, the challenge is for administrators, the challenge is to our teachers, the challenge is everywhere, is how we can adapt and make things better. Unfortunately, they are never going to be best. They're never going to be what we want. Until we're in school five days a week all the time, I don't think we're, you know, it's, it's never going to be perfect, and there's going to be challenges along. So that is just all that I wanted to say. And I guess I'll choose, I will turn it over to you. And we can kind of bring in this discussion further.
Thank you very much. I was going to lead off with what you were speaking about, and it was very well said. You know, I think that there's, certainly, we are moving forward with our hybrid model. We've got the planning that has gone on since late spring, and we'll be moving back next week, October 15th, the Thursday, and the 16th. And quite frankly, I think everyone is very excited to have our students back into our classrooms. And I also, I've, I've read the emails from parents over the last few days. I understand the concerns. I am blessed with having some young children in my life. They're not my children, but they're in my life. And so I, I see firsthand what our parents and guardians are talking about. A few people I've tried to link up with our principals so that, because there may be some additional support that we can provide to students, and so I, I want to make sure that as we respond to parents, not only am I saying to parents in emails that I believe that, you know, all models of programming have merit, but that I also want to make sure that I, people understand that I am giving due consideration to what they are asking, both some of our teachers and also some of our parents. I say some of our parents because I also hear from parents who have been concerned over the last week as they've seen information out on social media, not coming from the schools, but they had heard about the petition and so forth, that they were concerned that I would be removing the virtual remote cohort from the elementary schools. And I, I want to assure them that that is not our intention. And when I say that it, certainly the request to move to a different model, we're going to do the same thing we did from the beginning. And when we looked at it early, very early on, I think I've mentioned to all of you, but to our community, I was a Mansfield student when the Robinson School was being built, and during that time, we had double sessions in our elementary schools. Some of the things that we didn't have to worry about, but so it's why I, I thought of the idea of these double sessions, but some of the things that we didn't have to worry about probably in those days that we do now are certainly the bus transportation, the food service, particularly during COVID cleaning. And that was a really big consideration during the summer. And I should say even before summer, during the late spring, as we started looking at hybrid models, you know, and, and I think that you use that term evolve, Kira, about how we are looking at continuing to evolve through the school year. But last spring, you might remember that the CDC was telling us that touch was such a huge issue when it came to COVID. We'll learn, we've learned more, and Christine Duelling will be with us and can speak much more knowledgeable, knowledgeably. But the idea of the aerosols, the breath being more of a concern than the touch. But last spring, and even now, I am concerned with how we could clean appropriately the school in the given time between sessions. Now, do I think anything is a a roadblock? No, but I think that, I hope that our parents and that the teachers who requested that we also move to this model understand that this is not something that we can turn around. I would not want to turn it around in a week. We have worked so hard on schedules, and we're working on the buses, and we're working on the how we're moving students in and through buildings on signage. We have worked very hard to be ready for students next week. That's not been something we've done overnight. I can't express to our community enough how the administrators, and I also believe teachers, but particularly the administrators in terms of the planning as we're moving forward. There are not any more minutes in a day for them. They are devoted to the work to bring our students back. So yes, I will absolutely give due consideration. We will look at feasibility again, because it was, it's not the first time that we've thought of the idea of the, the double sessions. The groups that you mentioned, the return to school safely and the return to school teaching and learning included approximately 70 individuals who represented all stakeholders. So as we, you know, as we talk about what we brought forward, you know, at the very beginning of the, of late spring, it was that model that you referenced of every other week was definitely the model that was being really pushed by the Department of Education. And again, the cleanliness and sanitation was one of those reasons, and the, the contact tracing of cohorts. So understood. I've heard people's opinions, and for now, we are moving forward in the direction that we have set course on over the past few months, but it is not, I am not a person who closes my mind or closes our opportunities or possibilities to continue to improve. So with that, I would like to mention that, leaving that and moving to a different subject is, I am really gratified.
Before we move on, I think I just, if there's others, people from the committee, I kind of had my, my speak, but. I'll start. Since no one's dropping out, I'll, Lynn, do you have any thoughts, comments?
Yes, I guess I kind of echo what you had said, Kira, about how these, these models are going to be evolving throughout the year, and you know, I think that we are in the position of trying to make the best decisions we can based on the information we have at, at hand currently. I, you know, fully recognize, and I think we've all recognized from the start, that the challenges, particularly for the younger students in, in the lower elementary in particular, we're going to be quite hard to, to navigate for some, especially for some of the children. And the prioritization set up by DESI is, you know, after the daily cohort, you know, the next level to probably start prioritizing is the lower elementary grades. And I think once we can get students back into the building with the hybrid model, we can assess it and figure out how to improve it from there. But to the point of trying to change it right now immediately, I don't, I'm not sure it's, it's feasible, but I am certainly open to hearing from the teachers and the administration about ways to improve things, and if there's a way to adjust the model. So that's, I think, where I'm at on it.
And Jen?
I too will echo what you said. I think that you did a really good job sort of summarizing what, you know, at least I've been thinking of all week as I, I read the emails and also, you know, look over other schools' plans and the DESI guidelines. It is, it's ever-evolving, and we really do, before we start changing our, our current plan, we really need to get the children in the building to see how it works. And it isn't something that's, it's not a change we can make in a week. But I do appreciate all of the challenges and talking with community members, and it, it is, it's, it's a challenge, but we're in the middle of a pandemic and, and nobody, nobody has all of the right answers. And I think it's, it's just about listening and, you know, always changing and being able to pivot. Right, thank you.
Linda?
Yeah, so I, I don't think I have too terribly much to add. I think both Lynn and Jen summed it up really well. I, I think the, the thing is, is the flexibility piece, because, you know, we have no idea what we, we think we know what it's going to look like when the kids come into school on the 15th and 16th, but we really don't, right? We don't know until they get there. So I think once the students are in for a week or two weeks, or, I don't know, dare I say three weeks, like, let's, I think it's an opportune time at that point to revisit and to kind of think where there is the opportunity to flex. But I, I agree. I think shifting course now is incredibly challenging. I mean, there's between facilities and bus and all of the different components, you know, I think there's, there's too much of a struggle there at this moment, but I do recognize, you know, what's going on with some families and how hard it is and how hard it could potentially be. So I think as long as we all keep an open mind, I think we're, we're good. That's it.
And Lauren?
Yeah, so I, you know, when I hear these stories or read these emails, it's, it, you know, I definitely take it to heart because I can only imagine, I can't imagine, you know, the struggles that the kids are having, especially the youngest ones and the parents. And so I, I totally get it. I feel like, you know, we're only a few weeks into remote learning, right? And there, and a lot of the, the challenges are with remote. And even once we move to hybrid, no matter what hybrid, there's still going to be an element of remote. So clearly, there's something we need to fix on that end, right? And there's, a part of that is just a learning curve and everybody getting used to it. But there are, you know, there are elements of remote broadly that we need to, to think about, regardless of the hybrid model. I agree with everyone who's, who said, you know, right now, you know, is not the time to change up the model, but that doesn't mean that the model that we see next week is the model we're going to see in December, like Kira said. And, you know, me putting my researcher hat on, you know, thinks that we need to make sure we're collecting data and that we're, you know, which means that we're getting, you know, we're getting feedback from parents, we're getting feedback from teachers about how this is playing out, what are the, what are the roadblocks? Who are the, who are the, the students in particular who are being negatively impacted? And is there a way we can?
Did you guys lose her too, or is it me? Or is it, okay?
That we really need to be, think about, you know, a consistent way of collecting data so that we can get a better general sense of what's going on and how we can improve things. And so that's just something we probably should think about, but I, I agree that we, we need to, you know, keep monitoring, keep thinking about how to improve things, and, and listen to, you know, the, the teachers, listen to the school administrators, listen to the parents. And then also see what, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of the school districts that have been in it for a few weeks already. So maybe there are some lessons learned that we can, you know, we can learn from some of the experiences from neighboring communities or emerging evidence and see what we can take from that to help improve. Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, all of a sudden, my, my, my screen. So, well, you got what I was saying. So yeah, try and, try and, you know, see if there are lessons learned. I think that that will be important as well. I'm back.
And then I just had kind of three, after my long, my long spiel, there were just kind of three kind of closing things that I, or things that I'd like us to look at. One is I, you know, I would like to see if we can have a timeline on when this committee will get together to look at the alternative hybrid model so that it's not, you know, even though we can't do things quickly, the sooner we start looking at it, the sooner we could make changes if we have to. So I would like to see that. The second thing I'd like to look at or ask to be looked at is, you know, we had a certain threshold that we put in place for our daily cohorts. If in the Robinson especially, or Robinson and JJ, there is space to move that threshold so that we can get more kids in the building daily who need the greater assistance, I think that would be extremely helpful. And then I think I've, I've said it to you before, like, whatever we can do to get more, the, the kindergartners. So, you know, if we put that team together and all we can get is kindergarten, I mean, the, the, the younger, the better. Not the young, the, the younger, the more challenges. So those are just my three final comments. And then we'll, now you can go back to the rest of your superintendent update.
Thank you. I will say that I'm hoping that you're not looking for us to have anything within the next week. I, I can't tell you how we are spending every moment preparing for next Thursday. We want next Thursday and Friday to go as well as it can be expected, bringing children back to a building where they haven't been since last March. It's going to be quite, quite, it is quite an undertaking. And so certainly we can, I, I will get you a timeline, but I'm hoping that you give us the space to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish next Thursday, Friday.
Absolutely. But I just kind of wanted to, people like to know timelines rather than we'll look at in the future, so.
Me too.
That reminds me of the one other thing that I wanted to say, which is, you know, that I think we should also expect that those first few days of hybrid are not necessarily, you know, there's going to be bumps in the road, and that we need to kind of be patient and, you know, let, let this model play itself out, and, you know, and, and so that might take a little bit of time, you know, certainly that, that first week is all going to be a learning curve for everyone.
All righty, next, next superintendent report. I am really gratified and thrilled to report that the Mansfield Educators Association voted to ratify the memorandum of understanding for returning to school. This agreement covers items as varied as personal protective equipment, the schedules, HVAC systems, cleaning and sanitation, social distance, school visitors, educator evaluation, leaves of absence, and instruction in learning. I am very appreciative to the leadership of the association. You know, during the summer months, Assistant Superintendent Conley and I met with the three leaders, Principal Scott, excuse me, President Scott Cohen, the negotiations chair, Tim Capentier, and also high school teacher grievance chair Kevin McGovern. And we would meet weekly during the summer. But certainly, we needed to wait and But certainly we needed to wait until we had come to an agreement and the school committee had voted on our model before we could impact bargain the plan that we submitted to the state. The process of negotiation included members from all schools and was conducted in several two-hour sessions throughout August and on into the beginning of September. Today they took the vote to ratify and I I'm thrilled to say that they voted to approve. I can't speak highly enough of the professionalism of the M E A team that negotiated with us. Our school committee reps were Lauren and Lynn, and I appreciate the guidance and support that our team received from them. It is certainly will continue to be work in progress. However, it is much easier moving forward having an agreement. So we have spent a lot of time together, the negotiations teams and the district, because certainly from, I guess it would have been about January, we began negotiating the collective bargaining agreement that went on through July and then August and September, we negotiated this memorandum of understanding about returning to school. And so, you know, a couple of things, I know that there is a lot of press that our teachers associate, excuse me, not our teachers association, but the teachers associations and there are, there are many, I mean, we work with our local, but there are several national associations and the Mansfield Educators Association comes under the National Educator Association umbrella and the Massachusetts Teachers Association. And so I know there's been a lot in the press, but I can't speak highly enough of our teachers. Our teachers were back in their buildings. You know, for curriculum nights, we've offered them the opportunity that they could do their curriculum, host their curriculum night from their home or from their school. And so many of our teachers have been in the schools those evenings to be able to present using their classrooms. And so it's, it has been a work in progress that we prepare for school, but so much of what we've accomplished can be attributed to the the teachers who are doing such hard work to bring our students back to school. So that will be, I wanted to announce that that was, that had been brought forward and then will be taken care of business following that. Another item, this past weekend, I sent out a communication to let folks know that we had a school community member who tested positive for COVID. As it was the first person who had tested positive for COVID in our school community, I sent out a communication to the entire district. And that's when we had the difficulty because it went to so many of our families and staff members' spam accounts as opposed to their inboxes. We're not quite sure why it went to spam. Earlier in the week, I had sent out one from our office about the power outages in parts of town. It's really unusual when Mansfield loses power. And so we wanted to put something out there that, you know, students would not be marked absent, you know, students shouldn't be kind of panicking if they couldn't get online because they had no power. That also went to a lot of people's spam. So we are checking with our school messenger provider to see if they can take, they're taking a look to see if there would be any reason why the same provider we've been using for several years is suddenly going to your spam boxes. We have, it's gone through the first layer of evaluation. It's now gone to a second layer of evaluation. We will let folks know the directions we get. Until then, you know, if if you have a, if it, it says mark as un, and mark as not spam or not junk mail, if you can do so, but we will try to get some clear directions out to families to let them know what we learned from school messenger. The next question would be, will we let everyone know whenever there is a COVID positive case in the schools? You know, our original intention was to let, in which we do, is when there is a COVID positive, that we make phone calls to the close contacts and we also send an email with written instructions to follow up that, that phone call. And we certainly did that because it was new and because I think there was a lot of information from different groups over the weekend about COVID. We did send out a, a district-wide newsletter. Do I think it's the best way to handle it? Quite honestly, the jury's out for me yet. I, I really, until we see how we go with the testing, I'll continue to send out notifications. My fear, I have a couple of fears. One is I don't want to send it as a newsletter because I don't want people to start ignoring my newsletters. You know, I try to limit them to every couple of weeks so that people have something worthwhile to read. I also hesitate sending them with the school messenger, which is our emergency notification. Because again, I don't want people to just like, oh yeah, there's another one from her. So I, I'm being very careful in that communication, but for now I'm going to continue. We're going to send out notifications if there is a COVID positive. It's not for people to be saying, well, you know, which school or is it a student? Is it a staff member? Is it? It's, it's really just to let you know if we would be informing you by call if you were a close contact. And we are very fortunate because our school nurses had experience in the spring and early summer doing contact tracing with Fire Chief DeRosa and our public health folks. So they know how to contact trace and they know the calls to make. And so we are following all protocols between making those contacts. We let the district know and then we also manage the cleaning that would be required. Finally, what we're working on right now is a addition to our website. So that weekly, I think we're looking at Mondays, we will post the number of positive cases in isolation and also the number quarantine. And we will not separate by students and staff because we feel that there are protections to everyone and we do believe that we're all members of the school community. So that's where we're at with communicating COVID positive tests. Any questions on that? And I've just been informed that it's up on our website already. So I guess we were way ahead of Monday. Finally, some really fun news and that is that there is a couple of people, historians who have been working on researching the Green Hornet, our school mascot, and have determined that the Green Hornet's birthday is October 16th. Came to us October 16th, 1945, when the student body voted on the Green Hornet as being our mascot. And so we're looking to do some celebrations next week to celebrate the Green Hornet's birthday. Look for information about the history of the Hornet and our thanks to Bill Green for doing so much work with researching this aspect of our school and school spirit. So I think with that, I've concluded my report. Any questions before I move on? All righty, we do not have, we do not have administrative reports from either of our assistant superintendents, either Mike or Ed this evening. So we'd be moving on, Kiara, to approval of minutes.
Okay, great. All right. So first up, we have the approval of minutes. We have our open meeting minutes for nine twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes from nine twenty-two.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will be starting with Lynn.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Next up, we have our executive session meeting minutes from nine twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from nine twenty-two.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, starting with Lauren?
Hi.
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 Right, motion passes five zero. All right, next up, our old business, our committee updates. Audit, we actually have a meeting scheduled for October, I believe it's 29th. Was originally going to be scheduled, but there auditors had needed some additional updates. So October 29th. C I P, we are having a meeting this Thursday at three o'clock to review the proposals that were, not the proposals, but the capital expenditures that were brought forward to the select board meeting last week of the the water treatment and the vehicles purchased. So we'll be reviewing that on a meeting on the, like I said, on Thursday, three o'clock. Budget.
Um, we, we met last Thursday and we have dates set for the rest of the fall. We're trying to meet monthly. We're working on revisions to the student activity accounts policy and and manual to address the findings from the external audit last year. And Ed's going to be conducting an audit of the accounts this month. We're also looking at the existing policy around the revolving accounts and we also discussed the upcoming F Y twenty-two budget development timeline, which I think is on the agenda later. And Jen, anything I missed?
No, I think you summed it nicely.
Okay. Am I onto policy?
Nope, facilities first.
Okay. Sorry, Lynn, we're just gonna put you on either side. We were scheduled to have a meeting today to discuss the HVAC report and back to school, but because we are doing it all tonight, we canceled today's meeting and will reschedule something for a couple of weeks from now.
And now policy?
Now, so policy, we're meeting October 22nd and we were going to meet the 15th, but we have the the tri board meeting that night. So meeting the 22nd and we've also set dates for November and December. So I'm hoping after the October meeting, we can kind of come back with a list of priorities for the next few months.
And return to hybrid?
So we met, I believe it was on the 25th. We talked about health and safety, you know, the plans to return to hybrid, technology update and communicate issues around communication. And then we, you know, engaged in a conversation a bit about, you know, the, the purpose and role of this, this subcommittee, well, whether it should continue, whether it should morph into something else. And, you know, it's still sort of, we're still kind of talking, talking about it. We're thinking about changing the name to the Returning and Learning Subcommittee and meeting periodically over the course of the year so that we're thinking more beyond, more than just hybrid. For now, I think the plan is that we would like to meet a couple of weeks into the hybrid so that we can assess where we are with things. And obviously, we've had a whole conversation about this earlier, so it's very important to think about, you know, how is hybrid going and and whether the, the model is is working? And and just all of the, you know, the details that, that have been planned out and how they're all playing out in, in, in reality. So we have, we haven't put it on that, that date on the books yet, but we're thinking the first week of November, that would be when we would be meeting. And so that's about it. And I don't know, Linda, if there was anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, I think you summarized it very well.
Thank you. It sounds like it's, and the point to me to kind of just keep out there and evaluate kind of how we need to use it. You know, maybe this is a, the committee is used as a in-between for any changes to hybrid model. For you guys to discuss in that one before it comes to the bigger committee is a, just as something to think about. All right, so now we're up to the most exciting for the, the exciting one of our health and hybrid, which is something we're definitely all very interested in and appreciate Christine for putting together this presentation for us. And I think we have been asked to take ourselves off camera to make the presentation bigger. All right, Christine, you're up.
I think you're on mute. Thank you. Thanks for letting me present this information. Today, tonight, I'm really just going to talk about the health protocols surrounding positive COVID cases and contacts in our schools when we return to the hybrid model. Diane, if you could just flip it forward. We're going to take a look and talk a few minutes about the local COVID nineteen numbers. We're going to talk quickly about isolation and quarantine. We're going to talk about what contact tracing looks like in our schools. The Desi hotline that Desi has put out and the availability of the mobile testing unit that they have for us. So we know that Massachusetts is following our numbers closely. This website on the top, anybody can click on it and there's a couple of different links on that website. You can look at the daily dashboard for Massachusetts, which is just our daily, talks about our daily numbers, daily hospitalizations, daily positive testing. There's also a weekly report that comes out every week and that report talks about, it compares town by town numbers, it looks at hospitalizations, it looks at long-term facilities. And there's lots of other figures in there that they use to assess the status of Massachusetts. These measures right here are what the governor looks at when we progress to different stages in the state. We're in green and four of the measures and yellow and two, one is deaths and the other one is healthcare system readiness. The readiness really looks at the number of hospitalizations, the number of people in the hospitals and what they are needing in the hospitals. We do know that our hospitalization number has declined since its peak in April. At the peak in April, on April 21st, we had 3,965 people hospitalized. Yesterday, on October 5th, we had 473 people hospitalized. So it's definitely an improvement in care from that aspect. The next slide looks at our Mansfield numbers. So we've met with the return to hybrid committee a few times and also Chief DeRosa and Amy Donovan Palmer, the health agent and I, we talk pretty much on a daily basis, but this is a chart that we've been following every two weeks for numbers in our town. Our population is 25,000. This, we actually have a bigger chart that we look at that compares our numbers to surrounding towns as well. So we can look and see what color our surrounding towns are in. But as you can see for the, the bi-weekly numbers from nine seventeen to ten one, in our town, we did 1,499 tests, Mansfield residents were tested for COVID. And during that time period, any, only eight of those tests came back positive. So we're currently running at a very low positive testing rate, point five three percent for our town. In general, I mean, people hear a lot of talk about our positive testing rate in Massachusetts and we know in the beginning, towards the end of August into September, we were doing great. I think, you know, there was a little period of time that Massachusetts was like point nine, point, point eight percent. And then it slowly began to rise into September. We were at one percent beginning of September. And right now, Massachusetts is at a greater than five percent positive testing rate. But here in Mans, in Mansfield, our positive testing rates has still remained pretty low. And when you look at the color coding for the towns, the color coding is done for the number of cases per 100,000 of populations. So we're still, we are in a green. Some of our towns around here, you've heard stories about how, you know, Rantham has popped to red or a different town has popped to red. And sometimes that's just a case of a, of a cluster of of positive cases in Rantham. That was an unfortunate incident in a nursing home, but that will push your town into a different, a different category. But so what's important for us as a school system is when we do see an increase in numbers is to look at where those numbers are coming from and so we can help keep it know if it's, if it's a bigger case and our school systems are outside of our school systems. And so we can help keep it, know if it's, if it's a bigger case and our school systems are outside of our school systems. And then this is the slide that's on the Mansfield DPH website. They update it every day, and you can see that we currently have eight cases under isolation in our town. And the total number of cases since the beginning of the pandemic is two hundred and twenty-one. And that link on the top is the link to the website. Yeah, so currently, I mean, the people, we'll talk a little bit about isolation and quarantine in a minute, but it's kind of like a rolling number. So, we might have a certain number of cases in a month, but some people are coming off of isolation as other people are coming in. So, for the month of September, we had twenty-one cases in isolation through, throughout the month, in and out. And, um, right now, we only have had a, a total of three new cases in October, but some of the cases are still rolling over from the end of September. The next slide. This is just really a chart of the hybrid schedule for when we go back to school and how students from cohort A and B will be in the school every other building, every other day except for Wednesday. And then the daily cohort will be in every day except for Wednesday. So, you know, we've talked a lot as a group with the nurses, how, how we're going to track attendance and how we're gonna track absenteeism and try to follow up on people who are ill. It's gonna be a little tricky with the schedule, so there might be a little bit more communication from our nurses. We'll definitely be following up on absences that we don't have any information about. Some schools are coming up with different systems for parents to call in, to leave a message with the secretary who might have some questions to ask you. And I know that Mansfield High has a website that they're gonna have students, parents or guardians or students email. And I think it's, I meant to put this on the slide, but it's like MHS attendance@attendance@mansfieldschools.com. So, we'll be following up on situations like that. Nurses will be calling families for travel plans, because we'll need to follow up on testing results from travel. We'll be calling for immunization follow-up, and of course, we'll be calling for close contacts, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. For illnesses during the school day and when students are at home, we are asking parents and students to think about the symptom checklist every day and to really stay home when you're not feeling well. Even if it's a symptom that, you know, last year you would have pushed yourself through the, through the day to get through. Our level for dismissal is gonna be a little bit lower. We're gonna send people home and see if they can feel better and bounce back and come back to school the next day. And if they don't bounce back, or if they have more symptoms, or if there's any fever in any sort, we're going to be asking them to call the physician for follow-up. And our school physician works out of Westman, Westwood Mansfield Peds, and we've talked about this a few times with her. And, you know, the pediatrician offices realize that they're going to be getting more calls from people. There might be times where there's a, a different diagnosis and the child can return to school. But they also might be testing that child as well, because no one wants to miss a co, a co-diagnosis where somebody has strep but also has COVID. So, there's definitely gonna be a little bit more follow-up with pediatricians this year, and I think that's just understood. The next slide breaks down really a lot of the questions that we've been handling at school from different people. What's the difference between a case, a contact, and a contact of a contact? And there's, we're gonna talk about this more as the presentation goes on. But everybody knows what a positive COVID case is. If you're diagnosed with COVID, that's a positive case. So, then the question goes to who have you been close with on the day of your symptoms and forty-eight hours before? That's what we trace back for contact tracing. So, then those people that, once that conversation happens, you become the close contact. So, then there's a, that, those are the people that need to quarantine. But somehow that gets some little confusion of a contact of a contact, because we often hear, we'll get a phone call and say, you know, someone who works with my best friend or someone who works with my husband is positive. Do I need to stay home? No, your husband's the contact. Your, your husband needs to stay home and quarantine. But you get to still come to work or still get to live your life until your husband either tests positive or your husband starts to show symptoms. So, um, those questions are questions that we just have to take on a, on a case-by-case basis and just kind of walk people through it. But a lot of times, people are afraid that they're gonna spread the disease, because they know somebody who's a contact. If there's a kind of a safety window, once you, when you're in touch with somebody who is a positive case and you, and then they call you and tell you that you're a contact. If you've spent time with that person in the last day or two, it takes your body a couple of days to replicate the virus and then become sick. So, you're, you're not automatically spreading the virus. And we'll talk about that quarantine and infection period in a minute. But that's just one of the confusing terms that we seem to hear about contacts. The next slide. I'm gonna kind of go through isolation and quarantine. So, if you're symptomatic or you happen to test, uh, test for COVID for a different reason, and it turns out you're positive for COVID, that's when you begin your isolation. So, isolation always begins on the day of your positive test or the day of your symptoms. And you need to isolate for ten days. So, isolation means that you stay in your house. You kind of live in your own space, you live in your own bathroom, you eat by yourself, you separate from the rest of your ice, your household. You isolate, you're trying not to spread the disease. Most people are sick from, that the max for ten, for ten days when they tested people who have had COVID in the beginning of the pandemic. I think people would hear of people who would, you couldn't leave your house until you tested negative. Well, after multiple testings, they realize that you will continue to pass, test positive for COVID. But after day ten, you don't have enough virus to pass on the infection. So, the tenth day is when you can come out of isolation, but you need to have fever-free for twenty-four hours and an improvement of your symptoms. So, once you test positive for COVID, you're gonna get a call by the, what happens is you test positive. Your, your test goes into the contact system for Massachusetts, which is called Maven. It pops up, and then it goes to the Massachusetts Collaborative Test Contact Center, and they'll call you. So, then they're gonna ask you a bunch of questions, they're gonna go through your day, they're gonna try to find out who your contacts are. And it's really important that people are honest with what they've been doing and they disclose that are contacts. Nobody should be embarrassed or ashamed that they get sick or they have COVID. And we need to be honest, so we can get in touch with other contacts and have them stay home and not pass on the disease. So, a contact is somebody you've been within six feet of distance to for greater than fifteen minutes. In a, for the school setting, we're talking about a classroom, a bus, another school space. While the person was infectious or two days prior to the symptoms. So, you're always infectious the first day of your symptoms and forty-eight hours prior to that. So, that's why we always ask you what you're doing for forty-eight hours prior to the first day of symptoms of positive test. In the elementary and middle schools, we're going to consider everybody in a cohort, close contacts. Those are people that are gonna be together all day. They might not be sitting within six feet of each other, but they're gonna be sitting in the classroom all day. They're going to be going to lunch together, they're gonna be going to recess together. So, in the beginning, we're going to be extremely cautious, and that is gonna be considered a cohort. Not to say that things might evolve as the year goes on, but that's how we're gonna start, start off the year. In the high school, where people have different classes, we're going to do case, case investigation and talk to the positive case. Find out who they've been sitting there, who they've been talking to. We certainly will be pulling class lists, seating charts from the classes, seating charts from lunchrooms. We'll be talking to teachers and pairs within the classroom, and we will be looking at activity during recess to try to figure out who the close contacts are. When we talk about close contacts in a school, we're not talking about people that you have a brief interaction with. We're not talking about somebody at the cafeteria, if you're going through the line and you happen to like buy lunch from the cafeteria worker. If a teacher holds a student from a door and we, and later hears that that person might have had COVID, that's not an interaction. We know that fifteen minutes is the number that we're really looking for. We're not gonna, you know, twelve minutes is, is as good as fifteen, but two to five minutes isn't fifteen minutes. So, if a parent is helping a student maybe sign onto a Chromebook with masks on for like a minute, that's not really a contact. That's not enough time and space to transfer the virus. So, those are the questions that we usually get about close contacts. And I know people have a lot of anxiety about, anxiety about it, and we're just happy to answer those questions every time they came up. The next slide.
Christine, I have a question before you move forward. This is Lauren. So, when, when you say for the elementary and middle, it says within a cohort, do you mean like a classroom? For elementary.
So, I mean, like a cohort, yes, a classroom. So, cohort A, cohort A and cohort B and like, you know, that classroom, yeah, a classroom.
So, it's just the classroom, and then for the middle school, it would be the team, is that right?
So, for the middle school, yes, I've spoken to Dave, and he says they're moving through the day. It's the same group of kids that are moving through the day. So, whether that's the team or the cohort A, yes, that's what I mean. Those kids that are in class every single day that are going from one class to the next to the next.
Okay, thank you.
So, then, when you get deemed a close contact, what do you need to do? So, when you're sick and you are test positive for COVID, you isolate. When you're a close contact, you quarantine. So, quarantining is actually fourteen days, where isolation's only ten, because the incubation period for the virus is two to fourteen days. Most people will become symptomatic on day five. Fifty percent of people will develop symptoms on day five. Only, and when I talk about that little window you have as a contact, only two percent of people develop symptoms in the first forty-eight hours. So, you really do have that, that little window contact tracers have to, to find people and to get them quarantined. But ninety-five percent of people, if they're going to get sick with the virus, will get sick by day fourteen. After day six, seven, eight, it does seem that less people will get sick. But they quarantine you for fourteen days, because there has been a small percentage of people who will get sick on day thirteen or day fourteen. So, no matter what you do, you need to quarantine for fourteen days. DPH and CDC recommend that everybody get a COVID test on day four or five from your last day of exposure. Because like I said, fifty percent of people will be symptomatic from day five. So, we really want you to wait those five days to see if your body's going to replicate the virus, and then you get a test. I've heard a lot of conversation that insurances won't pay for tests. If you go anywhere and you tell them that you were a close contact and you are asking for a PCR molecular test, your insurance company will pay for it. What happens is a lot of people wanna get the testing results right away. So, the testing places will say, well, we can give you a rapid test, but you have to pay for it. That's an antigen test, and you do have to pay for it, because insurance companies won't cover it. Antigen tests do have a degree of false negatives. So, the insurance companies will only pay for the PCR test. The problem is the antigen tests come back a lot faster, so people want the answer they wanna know. But it doesn't matter, you have to be quarantined for fourteen days. So, you might as well use your insurance and not, not pay for the test and just wait, quarantine and watch your symptoms. So, if you get the test on day four or five and you, and you test negative, that's great. You still continue to quarantine and you just monitor your symptoms and you stay in fourteen days. If, um, let's say you get the test on day four or five and you, and you're, you don't have symptoms, but you test a positive, then you turn your quarantine into isolation. So, on that day, then you start ten days of isolation. I have really rarely experienced this. Most people who get tested, who are a close contact, they're, they're asymptomatic and they test negative. I have seen people turn positive as the days go on. But I, I don't really hear too many asymptomatic people who are quarantining who test positive. Especially since the situations that I've been dealing with. The people are masked and they're using social distancing, so those are protective factors. So, all these protective factors are in place, so even though we're going to be asking people to quarantine, we're really hoping that our testing results are low and that our quarantines and nicely, and nobody gets sick. Some people prefer not to test at all, and that's fine. They just need to stay home for fourteen days and watch their symptoms. And when they see symptoms, that's when they need to go get a test. So, the next slide is just another slide that talks about quarantining and how long you need to stay in place. So, the problem with quarantining is we all live with other people. So, when you're sick, you obviously are gonna go to your room, you're not feeling well, you're sick, you're gonna isolate, you're staying away from everybody in your house. Quarantine is kind of a weird term, because you're not sick, but you have to live like you're sick. You have, kinda have to stick to yourselves, stay in your house, keep your interaction with, you know, your family at, at the minimum, because you don't wanna transfer, if you happen to turn positive, you don't wanna have to look back forty-eight hours and say, oh, I had dinner with my family. Now, they're gonna be close contacts. So, when you're quarantining and you live with your family member, if you can kind of just stay off, be by yourself, then your quarantine can be a quick fourteen days. Well, not a quick, but it can be fourteen days. And then on the next slide, you can see that it can get really complicated when you're a family member who's a caregiver. So, if you have somebody in your household who has COVID and you're a close contact, like say my husband, or say my, my mother lived with me and she had COVID, and I had to care for her, so I couldn't really separate myself from her. So, I really can't start my quarantine until she's done with her whole illness, and I know she's not gonna pass the virus on to me. So, I have to be here with her for her ten days of illness and take care of her. And then I would have to quarantine at four, for fourteen more days to make sure that, um, I didn't produce any symptoms. So, this gets kind of tricky when we're talking about staff members and staff members who have family members at home that they have to care for. If younger children in the family have COVID, or if they have COVID, but they're still caring for their young family members, and then their young family members have to quarantine. So, it can kind of be a flip. They're at home for ten days sick, but now their family member has to quarantine, and they need to stay home and watch their young children who need to stay home. So, these are just some things that we need to keep in mind, and keep in mind when we're talking about quarantining staff and what the school situation is gonna look like, if that makes sense. So, what do you do while you're waiting for testing results? So, um, this is kind of tricky, because everybody who, we've dealt with this a lot. They have a family member that has, is getting tested results, or this is gonna be a big thing at school. When we send a child home with multiple symptoms, it may turn out to just be a, a regular virus or some other virus, but they're still gonna go get tested for COVID. Their siblings can still go to school. The most important thing that you, that anybody has to ask themselves when they're getting tested for COVID, have I been in contact with anybody who's tested positive for COVID? If I can, if I do not know anybody who's tested positive for COVID, we know in Mansfield that our testing results are point five-three percent, extremely low. We know that people are now going back out into the world. We have our daycare center that people, little kids are still, they're starting to merge with other little kids. We're gonna be going back to school, where kids have been playing with one another, but they're kind of playing with the same kids all over again, every day. So, now they're gonna go, going back to school and be mixing with other little kids. We are definitely gonna see viruses, we are definitely gonna see fevers, and it's not necessarily gonna be COVID. So, we really need to take a deep, deep breath and not quarantine everybody who knows somebody who's going for a test, because it could just get to be a really sticky situation. I mean, every time that I give this advice, I just think to myself, I just have to keep remembering that the testing rate in Mansfield or wherever that person is from, sometimes I Google another town, it's extremely low. And the testing has been coming back negative. That's not always gonna be the case, and when that's not the case, then we move into contact tracing. But that's the way that we have to think about it, because at this point, and if things change, then we'll, we'll change the way we're approaching it. So, while you're waiting for a test result, you just, you know, ask yourself, have you been in contact with anybody who has COVID nineteen? The answer is no, you just take care of yourself, you kind of stay off to yourself, you rest, and your family members can go about their, their normal life and just try not to, to think about it too much. And sometimes the testing results comes back in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and sometimes it takes three to five days, which can be painful. The next slide is just a flow sheet that we put together for principals to have and teachers to have. And it just, it looks at every different scenario that can happen in the school. Somebody you know has tested positive for COVID nineteen. Somebody you know has a close talk, you're a close contact to somebody who has positive nineteen. Somebody you know has, has COVID nineteen systems, but is not suspected to having COVID nineteen. So, the fourth one in is kind of important, because that's going to happen, that people are gonna have symptoms, and they might have an underlying condition, they might have strep throat, there's going to be other diagnoses that happen, and then they can return to school. I think in the beginning, what's gonna happen is they're gonna have a medical note, but they're also gonna be COVID tested. Because like I said, I've spoken to the school physician, and we don't wanna miss that. We don't wanna miss that chance that somebody's gonna pass on the disease. But they, they might have another diagnosis, have a negative test, and then they're gonna return to school. And then, of course, for travel, that's just the, the state mandate that's out. So, if you travel to any of the red states and you're a student in the school, we're going to require a negative COVID test. The state mandate is such that parents can attest to children under ten, that they haven't been around anybody who had positive COVID while they were traveling, and they don't have to get a COVID test. And we just need to see the parents' negative COVID test before the child can return to school for the safety of the school community. The next slide talks a little bit how we're going to collaborate with the Community Tracing Initiative through Massachusetts. So, all the school nurses took the Johns Hopkins Online Contact Tracing School program this fall. Many of us did contact tracing through the town during the spring. And we were actually working as the Community Tracing Collaboratives. At the end of May is when we handed it all over to, to the, the new state collaborative that Governor Baker put into place. So, right now, what the state is doing is they're assigning team leaders to a group of schools. So, I've had one conference call with our team leader, and I have another one tomorrow. And basically, what's gonna happen is the school nurses will And basically, what's going to happen is the school nurses will initiate the contact tracing. So what happens is when somebody goes to get a positive test, it, like I said, it goes into the Maven system, and there's a delay. Even when we were doing the contact tracing, sometimes we would call the, the person, and the person would say, oh, yeah, I've known for three days. My doctor called me, I know I have COVID. And sometimes we would be the first person who would call. So you just never really know how quick it's going to get in, and I don't know why that is. But for the most part, when someone finds out they have COVID, whether it's a staff member or a student, they're going to notify their school nurse right away. And then we can immediately start the contact tracing. We can start making the lists we need to make. We can start getting in touch with the people we need to, to get in touch with. We can start giving them the DPH protocols on how to quarantine, and we, we start a flow sheet. And once we have that, then I'm going to upload that flow sheet to my team leader, who will then pass that information on to her team, and then they will continue with the contact tracing for the fourteen-day quarantine period and the ten-day isolation period for the contact and the contacts, the positive case and the contacts. The great part about that is the state has really put together a nice resource center for individuals who are going to have trouble. I mean, there are some people who live by themselves who might have trouble getting food or daycare or some other support services, and they can get those support services through the Community Tracing Collaborative. So that's ideally how we think it's going to work. And for this first situation, it worked great. So it worked exactly how it was supposed to work. So the next page is just some more information about the Community Tracing Collaborative and that these people, that people in our town, when they see the prefix eight-three-three or eight-five-seven, that's actually the mass COVID team, and it should actually say that, like on the, on the phone number. So it's not a crank phone call. And they're going to ask them a lot of the same questions that the school nurses are going to ask them, and it probably will be a little repetitive, but sometimes that does jog a memory, and then you remember another contact that you didn't know about. So certainly, there'll be communication between Armireth, who's the, our team leader, and myself to make sure that we, we get all the contacts that we need to get. And again, it's just really important when people get these calls that they're honest. Nobody, you know, needs to be embarrassed about having COVID, and it's really important that we get in touch with the people that we need to get in touch with. And when you get a contact call from either the school or the Community Tracing Collaborative, it's anonymous. We're, we're just saying that you were in touch with somebody. There's never going to be a name given out or information that would break confidentiality. The next slide, so Desi is, um, I think Teresa referred to this, collecting information on districts that have positive cases, and they're putting together a flow sheet on their website just to, to monitor numbers in the state. So it was very easy, I just called up, it was anonymous. I just gave the school name, the district name, and the information they needed. That was it. They did contact me the next day to make sure that we didn't need anything, and it was, it was very supportive. So, um, and she talked about the, the graph that we're going to put on the website, and I think actually Stacy did put it up there tonight. So currently, we have one case under isolation. We have nine contact cases in quarantine. In total, since September first, we've had seventeen cases in quarantine. The next page talks about the mobile testing unit. So that's another initiative by Desi. I know that this has already been used in some high incidents, like in Boston and Chelsea, they use the mobile testing unit. But basically, there's certain criteria we have to meet in our town, and then they will send this mobile testing unit out, out to our schools. I listened to a webinar on how it's going to work. I think it would work fine. We have to, like, if we had, so there's, there's four scenarios, and they're all within a fourteen-day period. But if you have two or more cases in a classroom, if you have three, three or more cases or three percent of a given grade or a cohort, and then three percent of a school or two or more on a bus. So, you know, we can figure out those numbers. But basically, anything that's like alarming to us, I mean, they were pretty flexible. Give them a call, and they can see what they can do. Send the mobile testing unit out, and what it will do, it will test asymptomatic individuals. Because if, if the spread is happening and we're, we're not catching the right contacts, it will, it will test a larger group of asymptomatic people to see if they can stop the spread. So, um... Yeah. The next page is just really all the nurses' information. So I'm kind of going to do a version of this for parents on Thursday night and just try to give them the same information and try to give them the same confidence that we will contact trace the, the cases that we see in the school, and we're going to do the best we can to, to keep it a safe environment and really have their support, hopefully, of keeping kids homesick and, and calling doctors for advice when they're, when they're not sure about concerning symptoms. So, is there any questions? Do I dare ask?
Thank you, Christine. That was a really great, really detailed presentation. I think this is going to be really helpful, you know? Hopefully, parents actually view, you will re, will review this meeting and watch it, and we'll have these documents out because I think it's really helpful. I guess I invite the other school committee to jump back on the camera with any questions.
And as they do that, I have one clarification. And that is that Principal McGovern and his team have created platoons, what, smaller groups that he's calling platoons. And so in reference to Lauren's question, the platoons, each team has about five, four or five platoons. Each platoon includes about sixteen students who will travel from class to class, the core contents as well as the specials. So it'll make the contact tracing for our school nurses a little bit easier because those students will be in the smaller groups as opposed to the entire team being contact traced. It's a new term, so we're not quite used to it yet. And so I, I just wanted to add that piece.
All right, who wants to jump in?
I'll jump in. Hi, Christine.
Hi.
Thanks for all your work, because that was a, that was a lot of information. And will this, will this be on the website or somewhere that parents could access it easily?
Probably the, we could put the presentation that I'm doing for parents on it because there's a little bit more information about immunizations and the travel mandate on that one.
Yeah, I guess that's my, was one of my main questions. What's the expectation around, you know? What, what should families expect to do or staff in terms of kind of reporting about travel plans? I saw, I've seen some districts who are asking it, you know, to report it before you go, or, you know, you have to report when you get back, or like, what's, is there a protocol in place?
Go ahead. I can speak to, truly. Jocelyn Lemire, the Director of Human Resources, is working on a, a document for guidelines and practices for travel throughout the town. So for all town employees, including our staff at the school. And then for students, parents generally give us the heads up if their children are going to be out of school for particular reasons. But Christine, I'll let you add anything to that.
Um, well, I was just going to say that. I know Jocelyn's been working with staff who are traveling. But for students, um, similar, well, so the, I, I also wanted to say about the contact tracing. So this is basically how we work for the DPH. If we were to have a breakthrough chicken pox or measles, it's how we've managed it. If it happens in the school, the nurses have historically, you know, since I've been here, we do the, the contact tracing for the, it's usually you just, we call the epidemiologists in town, and we send the letters home, and it's usually, you know, one case. This is definitely on a larger scale. So the, the difference is if with the, if somebody, if a student was to have a contact, a positive case, we would absolutely know about it. It's not, not that I think people wouldn't tell us about it, but, you know, there's, there's lots of different scenarios that can happen. But we are in constant contact with Chief Droscha and the, the Maven Center. So we will know of all cases. And for travel, we're really relying on parents, to be honest, and let us know that they're traveling. So, you know, they should be following the state mandate when they come back, as well as their children. So when we know about it, if we get a note, or if we know that they're out and we're following up the phone call and we find out where they are, we will be requiring the PCR test, just as the state mandate says. So it's a little bit tricky because, you know, you know, it's, we're relying on honesty, but, you know, hopefully, everybody will be doing the right thing.
Just one other question. I know I've seen, I've heard, I've had parents ask. So if your child's home for the fourteen days, and this might be, you know, depend on what, what school they're at or what age they're at, but their access to, would they be able to? So say they're in Cohort A, and they're not going to be in school. Can they join the, you know, are they able to access the remote portion? I think that's the gist of the questions I'm, I've, I've been getting. You know, what happens if you're home for fourteen days since you can't go into school with your cohort? Are you, do you just...
Yes.
Participate in all the days of remote then?
You can, of course, it's going to depend on if the child is healthy or not, but certainly, they would have access to that. And also, that would be anyone who's out for that length of time. Each school would be having someone, depending on the school, might be a guidance person, might be an assistant principal, who works with the student to be able to make sure that they are maintaining momentum through that period of time.
Okay, great. And then Christine, you're, you're doing a parent presentation? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Where is that? Thursday at?
I think five-thirty or five-fifteen.
Five-fifteen. We'll check that.
It's with Ed, with Ed Donahue with Transportation, and Don Langtry is going to talk about food services.
Okay. Great, thank you. I just wanted to get that information out again because there's just a lot of information going out to families right now. Thanks.
Five-thirty, five-thirty to six-forty-five.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thanks, Christine.
Happy Christmas night for high school.
Teresa, what did you just say? You broke up a little bit. What did you say about high school?
So the, uh, the information that the, that Christine, Don Langtry, and Ed Donahue will be sharing is five-thirty to six-forty-five, and then that will then be fourth grade for the high school hybrid presentation. Roland Greed is also doing the curriculum night that night. However, they don't need the, they already have the health information. They don't need the bus information, and they don't need the food service information. So we've timed them all and just so that we can have all three events that evening.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. The mobile testing unit, is that the rapid test?
You know what?
Or is it the PCR?
I'm assuming it's the, um, so the PCR, there's actually a rapid molecular test machine. It's just really hard to get, to get. So I'm assuming that the mobile testing unit is using the rapid molecular test.
Okay, and that's a more reliable test?
Yes.
Okay.
Antigen test is actually very reliable when it tests positive, and it's just when it tests negative. I don't know, but, you know, at, at every DPH call, they're saying different things. Eventually, I think they're just going to accept, accept the antigen test. Right now, DPH, CDC, Desi, they're not telling the schools that we can, we can or we cannot accept any type of test. The only thing that there is a stipulation for is for the state mandate for travel because no one really wants to step out on that. I think I've had many conversations with it with Chief Droscha and Amy, and it just kind of goes round and round in circles. But we just, you know, if you get an antigen test that's negative, and mainly, we've been dealing it with people who are in quarantine. So that's great. We know there's a degree of false negatives with the antigen, but it doesn't really matter because they have to stay in quarantine fourteen days anyway. I think it gets where, where it gets a little tricky if, if somebody's symptomatic and they go for, to a doctor's office. But when you go to the doctor's office, they're actually referring people for PCR tests. Like, if you have symptoms and they think it's just a virus, we just want to rule out COVID, those people seem to be getting the PCR test and having to wait two to three days, which is appropriate, and then we know it's a true negative.
Okay. I have a question about the bus. So I know that there's spacing on the bus, but I'm not sure if it's, you know, counts as the six feet and, but then they might not even be on the bus for fifteen minutes. I, I just wasn't sure if that counts as a contact.
They are counting bus rides as a contact, but I actually think we do have to drill down for, you know, the amount of time on the bus, windows open on a bus, time of year on the bus. So we, we would look at that, we would really look at the bus route.
Okay, okay. And then just a suggestion, that, that cohort thing might throw people off. So like, when you do the presentation for the parents, if you maybe just add a little bit more detail about what cohort might mean for the middle school and the, and the elementary school, that would, that would be helpful. And definitely a recording. I mean, I found it was like, I've read this information like many times, but to hear you like actually talk through it all was just mu, it was much easier to just like retain.
That's good. I feel like sometimes I get on a roll and I'm not making any sense.
No, no, you were great, you were great. So I think just having that, you know, parents have that accessible in a recording would be wonderful.
Thanks, okay.
I agree, I definitely learned things, and I think I learned that I quarantined inappropriately on the travel after, after listening to you, and took the wrong test. So I did not understand the difference between the antigen and the PCR, so.
Right.
Very, very helpful.
Well, I find, I almost, it's like a, I, I, it's almost a scam because when you go for that test, they should tell you, you can get a PCR test and your insurance will cover for it, but they don't, you know? So even in this pandemic, people are making money, so I don't know. Great.
Well, I have to, I just want to say, Christine, too, you know, I know through the Return to Hybrid Subcommittee, you know, we've talked a lot about this, all of this information. And so to see it put together this way is really fantastic. So I, I really appreciate all the work you've done, you and Amy and Justin. So I know you guys have been working very, very hard. So thank you very, very much for that. I think personally, the most interesting thing is this whole contact versus contact of a contact.
Yes.
Because I, I think that cleared up a lot for me, and I know there are a ton of questions. I mean, I get asked by people, you know, what happens when somebody comes back from somewhere? You know, soon there'll be kids coming back from school, from college, and then how does that all work? So I think this is all very, very helpful. And I one-hundred percent agree with Lauren's suggestion about rehaving this recorded and put somewhere that's very accessible, very, very easy, very accessible to parents. You know, the easier, the better.
The contact of a context, it, it gets really, really complicated. And I think people, everybody wants to do the right thing. But for instance, like even if, you know, and, and pending tests too, people want to really pull back when somebody has, has a pending test. And every, and things might shift and things might change, and, and this advice might not be the same. But with the low testing rates, you know, you just really have to take a deep breath because we're in such a state of anxiety as it is. And then when you hear that somebody's quarantined, if somebody's quarantining for the wrong reasons, it just, it just makes everybody go up a different level. So it's hard, you just have to re, keep thinking the steps over and over again.
Yeah, and that's why I think too, the whole quarantine versus isolation, so to Karen's point, you know, what, what is the appropriate thing to do? I think that's also very helpful for that same reason, you know, this kind of not inducing panic.
Right, yep.
So, nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we done?
All right. Thank you so much, thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, thank you for coming. And since we got another, since we got another presentation this week, so thank you for doing it to me.
Okay. Thanks, Christine.
All right, next up, we've got our HVAC.
Yes. And Facilities Director Matthew Jack is here to report out on an outside evaluation that he, uh, had done on our HVAC systems. So, Matthew.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to quickly go through, we did have a, an evaluation done at the high school, Culture's Middle School, Jordan Jackson, the Robinson. This outside evaluation was done by Rise Engineering. So we, we partnered with Rise to take a look at our HVAC equipment and, and prepare recommendations for any break, fix, or, or issues that they saw for our return to school. So I think it's very important that Rise has indicated in each one of the reports for each building that the majority of our equipment is deemed to be in overall good condition. So we, we, we talked about these reports, certainly were some recommendations, but it's very important to know that, that they have deemed this to be in, in good condition. So for the age of our buildings and our equipment, that's saying a lot. That's really a good thing for us as a district. So the evaluation offered some specific recommendation repairs with efficiencies, and some of them were very common. So I just want to tell you about some of the common issues that they found. They found some exhaust fans were not operating. They found some unit ventilator air dampers were closed, and the speed settings were not correct, and some filter issues in our unit ventilators. They recommended that MERV thirteen filters be used in all air handlers. And they also made some recommendations on our nurses' respiratory rooms that they have negative air. And they also made some recommendations on our nurses' respiratory rooms, uh, that they have negative air machines or or create a negative pressure in those rooms. Rise completed inspections on two different dates. Uh, their initial inspections were between September first and September fourth with a follow-up inspection uh between September thirteenth and September eighteenth. The issues uh that were identified, they did a sampling of twenty percent of our classrooms when they did here. And I want to make sure that that I point out that as they were having their findings and we were hearing uh certain common issues, as I said, like with unit ventilators or with filters or with exhaust fans, we took immediate action. We did not wait for the full report. And although Rise only sampled twenty percent of the classrooms, we addressed those issues in one hundred percent of the classrooms. So consider the twenty percent to be the dipstick. As we got a reading that we had issues, we went to a hundred percent of our classrooms and made those repairs or uh not always repairs, but just evaluations to make sure that that it was not uh prevalent in a hundred percent of the rooms. It's also important to know that at the time of the initial inspection, we were still working on getting our new energy management system fully operational. So on the initial reports, when it showed things like air dampers being closed or exhaust fans not operating, a lot of that had to do with the new energy management system not being operational. I'm pleased to announce that our energy management system now that that controls the high school and the middle school is one hundred percent operational. We did final testing last week, uh, and it works great. Uh, we we have control over our classrooms. Uh, we have in those two buildings, remembering that the elementary schools, uh, this is a a longer term plan to to get an energy management system in those buildings. But in the high school and the middle school, we replaced our outdated software uh with new updated software and new controllers. So we have much more control over those classrooms uh and and much more um alerts if we're having issues. That'll become even more uh useful to us with heat uh when the heating system uh starts up here. And and we know it got a little cold this this morning and it's going to get a little bit colder as we go into next week. So when the heat comes on, uh, that'll really show us the benefits of our new system. So again, as we looked at the initial findings, there were a lot of uh, there were some issues that were related to that software not being functioning. So I just want to go through a couple of them and the exhaust fans. Uh, in the initial reports, you'll see that a large number of exhaust fans were found not be operational. Uh, we quickly identified that the majority of of the fans were in working order mechanically. However, there was some control issues that needed to be taken care of. I'm happy to announce that as of today, one hundred percent of our exhaust fans are now operational throughout the district. So after the initial reports and after our findings, uh, we we had some that still need to be replaced. We worked over the weekend uh with an outside vendor to help us and now one hundred percent of our exhaust fans are up and running. So that's a, that's a big deal for us and a big deal for the schools. The unit ventilators, the facilities team correctly quickly corrected the identified issues. Um, so currently, all unit ventilator fan motors have been set to the high speed. Uh, we visually inspected the units to ensure that the outside air dampers are open and the filters have been changed. We've also replaced the filters in our air handlers. So again, very happy to report that all of our air handling units now are running MERV thirteen filters. So the equipment that can handle the MERV thirteens are now running MERV thirteen filters. Uh, which again is a is a big benefit to to all of us. The health office respiratory prevention rooms, uh, that was recommended that we have a negative air pressure in those rooms. In order to achieve that, we we purchased negative air machines. Uh, the first negative air machine has been installed in the high school uh with the other of three machines coming in later this week. But all will be installed on or before October ninth. So we'll we'll also meet that requirement. The, yeah, I know, those are the big findings. Uh, there was a lot of work that went in. I I'd like to just also point out that we are very fortunate to have an in-house HVAC technician, uh, that is Paul Nadeau, who has been able to a lot of this work. When we talk about filter changes and we talk about belts and preventative maintenance, Paul came in in February, right before the pandemic and really hit the ground running to get us uh prepared, our equipment prepared and really is is done outstanding job. Right now, without an internal person, I don't know how we would find people to come and help us. Uh, the 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 industry right now is so busy with these break fix repairs. We have a hard time getting somebody to come in as we need additional help. So I just want to call out Paul and 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 his uh, his efforts for keeping our equipment up and operational and in the work that he has done. Overall, I'm very happy with the with the findings of the report. I'm very happy with the uh progress that we've made since the initial report and and happy to be here tonight to tell you that uh that we are in really good shape and 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 the things that are identified have been addressed and and taken care of. I'll certainly answer any questions. I, Teresa, I I, you know, I believe that that's the, you know, the reports are twenty-one page, an average of about twenty pages long. So uh, you know, to hit the highlights, I think was uh was probably most important. Uh, certainly great reading if uh you want to dive into it, but but I I don't recommend it all in one night. I would I would chunk that out.
Thank you, Matt. I would also like to um congratulate you for this work because um certainly you were um ahead of your time, ahead of the pandemic by advocating for an HVAC technician uh for quite a while, for really uh over a year, probably even longer. Um, and you were able to make a great hire before the pandemic and it just uh, you know, was was such a uh great move to make. Uh, I think also knowing that any staff member who works in a school uh was very aware of ventilation and air circulation as being uh concerns, not just not in Mansfield, but throughout all of the schools uh with regard to COVID nineteen. And uh certainly, the materials are, um, I mean, I feel like I've immersed myself in HVAC air ventilation and know very little, but I have been able to follow um the progression over the past several weeks uh because of the communications that you have uh done for our staff members in terms of sharing uh where we were at before the evaluation, uh, writing a preliminary uh evaluation report. And then uh the fact that you prepared this summary to accompany the multi-pages of each school's report certainly helped to um alleviate worries on the part of many of our our staff members. And I know you've been very um very proactive as the evaluation was done to make those um corrections so that we didn't wait for reports to come out and then have to do the work. So, you know, my congratulations to you for managing this project. It was quite a project to do. And uh certainly you've been very open to managing the questions that you've been getting from uh teachers, administrators, staff members within the building. So great job. And then I'll leave it open to the questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, let's open the floor to any questions.
I don't have a question, but I I do want to touch on what Teresa said because I, as I was listening to Matt talk. Um, I remembered, you know, well over a year ago in a facility subcommittee, um, Matt talking about HVAC um updates and getting in better filters and start, this work was talked about and started well before we even knew COVID, what COVID was. So I I do appreciate um all of that work that went in and I think we are probably better off now because that work had been well in the, in the works before um before we sort of needed it because of COVID. So I really appreciate all of the hard work.
Thank you.
And I think also Jen, to um to follow up on that, certainly the capital improvement program funding for the uh control system was a uh quite a contribution on the part of the the town. And then the COVID money, so to speak, the CARES Act money and the um uh funding that has come into our town and our schools has been able to fund so much of the improvements that have been made. So it certainly um, as you said, it was a benefit.
Anyone else?
So I actually have one question. Actually, I think I have two questions. Um, so Teresa, you just mentioned to the CARES Act funding and that most, I think you just said that most of the facilities was covered by that. Did I hear that correctly? Because I'm just curious.
I didn't give any. I mentioned that um the control systems were paid for but through capital improvement. And then we could fund much of HVAC through COVID funds. Uh, I don't think that we have seen a full breakdown of uh because it's, we're, it's still ongoing. I mean, we certainly had Kim in over the weekend. So uh Matt and Ed are managing that with the town. And uh once we have that um all scheduled as to where the payments will be coming from, we, Ed can give you an update on that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then um my other question, and this is sort of, Matt, this is a little tactical, I think. But you know, one of the things that kept getting talked about were these MERV filters, MERV thirteen filters, I think. So where the machine, you said that some machines could um handle them and so they have those filters now. The ones that can't handle it, what's the plan, I guess, for those? If those MERV thirteen filters are the ones that are recommended?
Yeah, my question. Yeah, so what our plan is, is to continue to move the MERV eight filters. So as you work on the MERV scale, there's MERV one through MERV twenty-one. Uh, so there's a lot of variation in the MERV scale and I've learned more about it than I ever thought I would need to know. Um, but the, to answer your question, the plan is to replace the MERV eight filters more frequently. Uh, and the reason that we, not all equipment can handle it is some of our older equipment, we would actually uh could cause the motors to burn out quicker and we could create ourselves more repair work by going to a MERV thirteen filter. Uh, the air handlers are bigger and and can handle that. So our our plan is to look at a a more um just a quicker approach or a quicker change time on the filters themselves. So when we change filters, we date them. Uh, so we know and we also put them in a system. So we know what the what the expected uh replacement date is on those.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have um a couple of questions. Uh, one, I think it's was sort of already answered. Um, but uh, uh, then that one has to do with the emergency management system, like so, so that we can't use CARES money for like if we wanted to put that in the elementary school?
Yes, we couldn't use, my understanding is we couldn't use CARES money for that. But I would say that one of the projects we are looking at is that that uh we believe qualifies for CARES Act money is replacing some of the older unit ventilators. Uh, and Ed and I are working on that with the town right now. Uh, we believe that that uh that we've gotten um permission to to move forward with that project to at least uh understand the cost and and make sure that it does qualify. With that, um, it gets a little complicated, but with that, we could put the controllers in the new units, which would put us way ahead of putting into control system in the school. So as we replace equipment, we are also looking at what, what do we need for the future? So although not directly, um, we can directly use CARES Act money, uh, we certainly could use it as we uh buy new equipment, uh, put the correct controllers to talk to the new system.
Okay. And and as I recall, you know, basically, if you if you don't have that system, then you just have to be more kind of manually um assessing the situation and tweaking things as as needed, right?
That's correct. So with the uh, one of the benefits of the new control system in the elementary schools, like I said, there are, that we do have some contact points. So we're we're able to see temperatures in the building itself, we're able to make sure that the boilers are running and things like that. What uh, it does mean a more manual process for opening some of the air dampers and but in making uh in some of the individual equipment. But that's actually with having Paul on staff and and having our programs now in place for preventive maintenance makes it much easier uh to be able to to be able to do those sorts of uh manual checks.
Okay, and that and that's uh sort of leads me into my last question, which is um, you know, it's great that we did this review, thorough review and we stayed on top of things and everything. So I'm just wondering like what the plan is kind of moving forward um in terms of kind of continuous review or whether you you're thinking about doing another assessment halfway, you know, like after a few months or halfway through the school year or anything like that?
Yeah, we do. Uh, again, we are looking at um getting, making sure that all of the recommendations that we that are met. Uh, and then we have already spoken with Rise about coming and doing us another follow-up evaluation to make sure that uh that all the systems are are still functioning properly and uh in that we have met the requirements of the first evaluation. So we are continuing, Rise has been a, has been a good partner of ours through this and continues to stand ready to to help us with any future needs we have. But we are, we have already engaged with them about uh, and I don't have a date for that yet because I want to see where our recommendations, make sure that we've followed through with all the recommendations from from the first evaluations, which really we just got um about a week, just over a week ago. So uh, I want to make sure we have those and then engage their services to come in and do us another evaluation of our systems.
Okay, thanks.
Is it me? My question. Um, so Lauren asked my first question. So so thank you, Matt, already for answering that one. And I guess kind of building off that is just also looking like looking forward. How, how frequently does that type of analysis typically need to be done outside of a pandemic? You know, outside the context of of a pandemic, is it like every three years or five years and?
Yeah, I think uh, so what what we know is we have aging equipment. So we've talked about it uh before, uh, putting some of this equipment on capital um replacement projects. But I think uh where our real benefit is, is having Paul. So we're not waiting for a full evaluation. He he is very proactive on reporting issues that he has, uh, issues that he sees uh for, looking forward to to identify issues so that we can get them on a more regular uh schedule for either repair or replacement. So I think that uh, you know, it it's hard to answer. We we should be doing this evaluation ongoing and then maybe have a full evaluation every every twenty-four months or so uh to make sure that there's not any underlying problems that that we haven't uh, we haven't seen. But having our, having Paul on staff is really seeing this equipment every day and working with the equipment every day. And he's much more uh able to identify uh future needs. Uh, and and it's something that that obviously in my time we haven't had. I know uh it is really a benefit for us to to have that, to be ongoing looking at our equipment.
Okay, um, this is very specific, but I know that the MERV thirteen filters there are on order for you. I think you guys had ordered them early on. Do we have enough for the rest of the year or?
I know we continue to order. So to as of right now, no, I don't have enough for the rest of the year. We have enough for the next change. Uh, but we continue to to place orders for those to make sure that we do have them uh for the next twelve months. Um, and that includes our MERV eight filters that we need for our unit ventilators and uh additional parts that we know are are break fix. So we we continue to have a a, an adequate supply, but to, if you ask me today, no, we don't have a MERV for thirteens for the year, but they are on, are being ordered and uh and will come in to be able to do those changes as needed.
Okay, great. Um, back to the capital program. Are there any specific items kind of in queue for the upcoming year?
Well, I think uh that will also be determined by what what's approved for the, through the CARES Act money, um, because that will help if we uh, if the unit ventilators at uh uh at the, that are identified are are able to be put through that, that will certainly help on the capital. Uh, and then we're we're always, I don't know specifically, I know we looked at some items for our our capital uh improvements. It's also going to depend upon um, you know, I I don't know where that, I know that there's some budget committee meetings coming up and and things like that. So we'll have to evaluate, but I think we're gonna have to take a look at what is able to be done uh with CARES and then where we are after that.
Okay, great. And then would it be possible to get this report out onto the website? Just I think, I know that there's been, you know, some questions from the community, some community members about their um new HVAC system and it'd just be helpful to have it on the facilities page at least.
Sure, we can get that, yeah.
I think that's all I have. Thank you for all your work on this. This is um really a, it's a, beyond the COVID piece, it's just really great to see that this um, you know, system's getting in place to just for the preventative maintenance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions, so. I think we are free to move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, I am up next with uh FY twenty-one enrollment numbers. Uh, so the Department of Education maintained its usual October first date for districts to send enrollment information. And we reported three thousand five hundred fifty-three students. I'd like to provide a bit of info about our report. So last June, we projected three thousand six hundred eighty-six students for this school year. So what we ended up having thirty-five fifty-three is a difference of one hundred thirty-three students from what we projected during the summer. Uh, we are one hundred forty-nine students less than October first. We are one hundred forty-nine students less than October first, two thousand nineteen. One of the biggest areas of change was kindergarten. We actually hired two additional kindergarten teachers because we had two hundred sixty-three students register in the spring. We now have only two hundred twenty-four students enrolled, so forty less this year than projected. They have gone to a number of different places, some to private schools, a few to homeschool, and some are waiting to come to school, it's come to kindergarten next year. So that was really one of the biggest areas of change for us is kindergarten. I also mentioned the homeschool, that some students went to homeschool. This year, families are homeschooling sixty-two students. That is double our typical number of students for homeschool. And you know, over the course of the last couple of months, I've spoken to some of those families who are homeschooling this year where they hadn't been in prior years. And the families that I either spoke to or we email communicated, most are definitely planning on returning once the pandemic ends and we are back to a more normal school routine. The virtual remote cohort. We have in grades kindergarten through grade four. So again, different from homeschool where the families are handling homeschools with families are handling the curriculum and the program completely on their own. The students are not enrolled in the Mansfield Public Schools. The virtual remote cohort students are enrolled in the Mansfield Public Schools. So they are counted in our totals of students. Kindergarten through grade four, it averages about thirty-nine students per grade in each of those grades for virtual remote. Grade five, it increases to about fifty students. Grade six through eight decreases down to between twenty-eight to thirty-four students per grade who are virtual remote. And then grade nine has fifteen students virtual remote, grade ten, twenty students, eleven twenty-two, and grade twelve, thirteen students. Evening school has thirty-one students at the present time, and they are trying to keep that number a little bit lower than usual for due to safety and social distancing this year. Our classes averaging, they're they're lower than oftentimes we would see because we did maintain most of the same staffing, other than that kindergarten where we added classes. So in, excuse me, in kindergarten, our classes range from sixteen to twenty students. In first grade, they average from about nineteen students, twenty students for grade two, twenty twenty-one for grade three, about the same, twenty twenty-one for grade four. And for grade five, the numbers in at the virtual remote are quite high with twenty-six in each of the virtual remote classes. And then the classrooms have between twenty and twenty-three students. And so we are, you know, hoping that our numbers increase again next year because we do hope that we will be back into a more typical school year. But we did do our report, thanks to Diane, who managed all of those numbers as she does and will continue to send the school committee a report of enrollment each month. And the just the Department of Education has told superintendents that they will certainly follow the trends of of enrollment over the course of the year. Because of course, students, there are, you know, per student fees and not fees, but funding for students. And so the the state understands how difficult it has been for all districts because we are similar to most in that our numbers have decreased. You know, I did not mention Rolling Green. They are at about ninety-six students right now. And that is, we have kept the numbers of typical peers lower, again, for social distancing. But again, that school is primarily a school for students with disabilities. And those students, as they reach age three, they become eligible. Students with disabilities at age three become eligible for their education. So we will expect to see Rolling Green increase in numbers as the year progresses. Any comments or questions about enrollment numbers?
My only comment was that I think it kind of goes back to what I said probably the beginning is, you know, looking at the kindergarten, there's only four in the daily cohort. So whatever we can do, you know, obviously, I can understand that because we didn't know. You know, a lot of these children weren't, you know, weren't identified too. So whatever we could do to increase the daily cohort, if there's some thresholds that we need to look at or, you know, based on just a few weeks into school, understanding some of those kids that have higher needs to get them in. And then I also looking at the kindergarten numbers, you know, I think those are hopeful for their small numbers in general. So, you know, as we start looking into bringing more kids back in, I like I like the size of those classes.
I totally totally agree on all all points. Thank you.
Teresa, I just had a quick question. Are we, has the the registration between the the full virtual and the remote hybrid groups, is that settled down pretty much? Are you still seeing?
Yeah, it does seem to have settled down, you know. Once we had sent out those letters to families or emails, I can't remember how we did it, about which cohort their students were in, that's when we had quite a bit of movement. And it definitely seems to have settled. And, you know, with, you know, during our conversations this evening, I have to say that I am hearing positives from families as well as the challenges that many families are feeling. And I'd also like to say that because I think we in Mansfield pride ourselves on running a really top notch, high quality, high achieving school district. And so I'm I'm hoping that parents don't think that it is just Mansfield that is having the challenges with the remote learning and the young students and truly high school and middle school students, as well as elementary, who are navigating these challenges of not being in school full time, five days a week. I hear it from my superintendent colleagues. We are all experiencing similar situations. And certainly, I, you know what, I'm I'm proud of Mansfield and I want us to be having the best education for our students. And I do believe in continuous improvement. And so I I just, I hope families know that we are striving to continue to improve and that challenges that they may be feeling are ones that, although it's not an excuse by any means, but I don't want people to think that Mansfield is not trying to do an outstanding job to educate our students.
I think the one thing that stands out in many of the emails that we get is the praise of the teachers. I, you know, just the whole hundred support that I've seen from the community for the teachers. And I want the teachers, you know, any teachers that are listening to this to to know that 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 has been something that has stood out in most of the communications that we've received is, you know, my teacher is great, but, you know, we're we're struggling. We're struggling despite the fact that the teacher is is doing a great job just because of the this.
So. Yes, yes, I agree.
I had just a quick side question. Has there been any change in charter school enrollments?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry. I can look into it, but it's it's not something that I have at my fingertips.
Teresa, I have just one more quick question. So just kind of a general guidance for families. I you had mentioned that some families for kindergarten might have just not enrolled this year. Are they eligible to go to first grade next year? Or you would, I think you had mentioned that they would come to kindergarten next year, but are they able to go to first grade?
Well, I think we'd like to not make a general proclamation that we'd like to be able to connect with those families and see how their child is doing. You know, what what age is their child? So rather than saying yay or nay, I know that the the administrators and teachers would like to connect with those families, not right now, you know, as we progress through the year and be able to help those families make the best decision for their child.
Thank you.
Can make some interesting numbers or challenges for our kindergarten numbers next year.
It certainly will. So we've already started talking about how we will be able to do some surveying conversations with families and be able to see if we can determine, you know, as accurate a number as possible for enrollment. Of course, remember, you might recall that this year, the the enrollment or registrations, I should say, the registrations were much higher than normal. And that aligned to the birth rate, that the year was an anomaly in terms of the birth rate when these children, these kindergartners were born. Next year, it does level out again. So for example, last year, we had one hundred eighty-five students. This year, two hundred twenty-eight, although, like I said, we had been projecting much higher. And then next year, down to one hundred seventy-four is the projection, without taking into consideration any of the post pandemic issues that might come our way with the differences of enrollment this year. But it certainly hopefully will settle so that we can get back into a pattern of being able to see, you know, where where these children are going between kindergarten or first grade.
I just can't help but laugh because in six years, the conversation will be really funny, right? As the kindergarten enrollments are really happening.
True, true. I think you're right. All right. Any more questions on enrollment or should we move on to our FY twenty-one budget? All right. Moving along.
Hello? I've been out here listening the whole time. Okay, so for the FY twenty-one budget, it looks much of an update. We we have it as a standing item. I think we're still just plugging along. Everything's, you know, in line, working with the town. You know, we're trying with accessing the, you know, the CARES grant. The town's very cooperative and giving access. There's a lot of funds there. As Matt mentioned, we're working, bringing some capital projects potentially with the CARES Act money. So we meet regularly. The next meeting we have with myself and Barry, Lucas, Matt Violet, and Kevin doing this is scheduled for next, I think it's next Wednesday morning. And we have a meeting scheduled to, you know, update on where we stand with the CARES Act and the funding and spending the spending the money. So for twenty-one, we're pretty much, you know, on, you know, still are in the process, but we don't expect it. We don't see any red flags, many issues to get through the through this fiscal year. But we're still going along, you know, as anticipated at this point. And any questions on twenty-one? It's not really.
No, but I think we do need to have a discussion, you know, because we will be expected to vote on the FY twenty-one recommendations that were that of the meeting that we went to. Was it last week already? So the one with the select board. So next Thursday, when we have our big joint meeting again, you know, the expectation is that, you know, as a committee. So I guess we, you know, look for there's, we can have any discussions now. And then we can take our vote. We'd be taking our vote next week. So I don't know if anybody had any feedback or comments from the proposal of putting in the reserve. Somebody in the FinCom reserve? Linda, you you're you're on the bottom of my screen, so I'm gonna go around circle.
Yeah, no, I I don't, I don't, no, I don't think so. I mean, it seems to make sense to me that if the we need to access it at some point that, because we just don't know what what things are going to look like over the course of the next year or whatever. So I, to me, that seems to make the most sense. Now, I got stuck on the on the water, the water presentation for a while. But no, the the rest of it totally makes sense. So I don't really have any questions.
Ken?
I don't have any questions. I I think that, like Linda said, if, you know, we need to put it somewhere that we can access it if we need it.
Lauren?
Yeah, I think it's kind of a no brainer. Like, we can't, you know, we can't lose the opportunity of accessing these funds. But of course, no one wants to, no one wants to access them if we don't have to.
Lynn?
Yeah, I think, like everybody said, it's pretty clear. You know, it's the budget situation from the state is still uncertain. And we're going to need the flexibility to to have access to funds because we don't know what to anticipate, particularly with the COVID Act. COVID funds potentially ending at the end of December. So I think it's actually a pretty good strategy.
I would agree. And I appreciate I appreciate the the town side offering to do that. Okay, because we'll be voting as I think that the looking for a whole vote at next week's meeting, so.
What would be the procedure? Just a question, you know, what's the procedure if we do need to pull from those funds? Then we would go, like, how how would we go about that?
Ed, did you get, do you have any specifics on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that. I would, I'm not really sure that I want to do the wrong answer. I I could check into that. I don't know if that's to go through town meeting or something. It goes through the FinCom. I believe, correct, Lynn, if you're familiar with that?
I think that's the key.
That we get, I think it's through the FinCom, I believe that's the case.
Right, I think that was.
We would have to present it, we would have to present it to FinCom and then they would have to approve it?
The my only question is whether we'd have to go to select board first, so that that's the only question. But yes, if FinCom is the ultimate decision making on it.
Right. And the reason this provides the flexibility that having, you know, town, the town meeting process wouldn't. And that's the benefit of of this strategy.
Okay. All right, now we can move on to FY twenty-two.
Okay, FY twenty-two. So you should have in your package a tentative timeline to develop the FY twenty-two budget. We have talked, obviously, and we talked about FY twenty-one stuff, and we have to move forward to FY twenty-two. So we are obviously moving forward. We have timelines we have to meet to get the, you know, to meet the town charter. So beginning, end of the week, maybe next week, we'll be sending out the templates we do annually to all the schools and department heads to complete at the building level. And to meet with all their, all the stakeholders, they obviously meet with the administrators, department heads, department heads, work with the teachers to get their request and streamline it. And they they'll submit all that into my office in the next, hopefully by November ninth. It's about a month to do that. We do anticipate, I don't think much will happen the first week or so, because obviously, that's what I'm sure the administration, it would be focused on the return, you know, on the hybrid, other students coming back next week. So probably not likely to have much activity on their end, probably till the week following, hopefully. So I guess still a few weeks to gather all the information and submit it into my office. And we'll and we'll put it all together and gather it. And then, you know, we will, we'll, we'll, you know, review them myself and Teresa and Mike, we go over everything. And then we do ask for the questions, you know, from the buildings to clarify things and what, you know, and support what they may have submitted. So that's the process. Like, we do, it takes us a couple of weeks to do that. And then in there is a time, traditionally, we have submitted, obviously, as part of this process, through this process, the capital improvement program request. I don't know, I mean, we talked about that a little bit internally and with the joint meetings. We don't expect to be to be much availability of capital improvement money this year because of the all the uncertainty in the the town budget. So we have talked about that. There may be just a couple of things we need to request to move forward that we'll talk about that with, you know, with the budget subcommittee and the and the committee, you know, as a whole, as we move forward. But then it may, internally, we think there's a few requests we we probably would hope to go forward with from capital improvement that we would need for FY twenty-two. And then the goal is where, you know, have a draft budget to go with the budget subcommittee by early. Then the goal is where, you know, have a draft budget to go with the budget subcommittee by early December. And look at that, see how the budget comes out. I anticipate, I think most people initially would be, we'd probably look into level service budget. You know, just pretty much carrying forward with what we have this year, I think, and, and planning initially for our traditional school opening next year. And see where that, where that takes us. I would say a level service budget, just with the contractual obligations. That's probably gonna be a three to four percent increase, you know, not adding any, any programs, you know, at the schools or adding. A large amount of textbooks or things like that. So, so that, we'll see how that evolves. And then obviously have to work, you know, with the town, with, with probably, I'm sure there'll be many, I'm assuming there'll be many meetings of the joint committee. Or the main, I don't know, the town, I've heard some talk about maybe having sort of budget committee or townwide. Because for FY 22, let's see how all that evolves. And then we would, we would have a final budget, you know, for everybody, for the, for the schools made to vote on. And, you know, probably by mid-December. Initial, initial, there has to be an initial vote of a number. And then we'd have the, the detailed presentations by the admin beginning of January 21. And then, I think that's, you know, when, we, we should have a final number by, by then. By early, early January, I think we should, you know, we'll present it. I think, I think the number has to be in by the end of December. So we, I think it'd be the 1215 number, and then we'll present the details after that. Once you go to the initial presentation, I'll give you the details at the next meeting. And then we'll obviously go through the whole process, you know, through the spring. Be a public hearing in April and obviously be a final budget, assuming in May with the town meeting. It's pretty much a similar process. It's probably gonna be, it may be some change, I think, maybe some changes or more oversight or more involvement. From all the town committees as we develop the budget and figure out where the town finances are gonna be. As you know, the town's still waiting for guidance from the state on the FY 21 budget. Never mind the FY 22 numbers, which do come out generally, I think the early governor's numbers are due in, in January of 21 would be the FY 22 numbers. So that, so that's what I have. Any questions or thoughts on this process or anything you might want to change or adjust? Put in the feedback.
So the, so the timeline looks, looks good for me. One of the thoughts that I had is kind of that I wanted to discuss with this group today is. When we've done the, but the last few years, we've done the budgeting. It's made for a fairly smooth budgeting process without a pandemic, obviously. By, you know, we've worked with the select board and the FinCom and they kind of give us a number. You know, they give us a number of this and we try to work our way into that number. And I think it's, it's worked well in terms of the fact that we end up where we're at and there's not fighting and we all kind of working together. However, right now, they're not gonna have a number. I mean, right now, picking, them giving us a number is, it equates to putting a number in a hand, pulling it out. Since we don't even know what FY 21 looks like. So I would like to see us kind of take an approach this year of kind of a, and think about, again, let's, you know, want to discuss this. So it's kind of old school budgeting that we've done for the schools where, you know. We don't, you know, FY 22 is gonna be a whole other brand new day, like, so we want to know what we really need and budget accordingly. So if that percent comes in higher than normal, because we think we're gonna need all these additional tutors or whatever to, to get our kids back up to speed. Or whatever we think we, we're gonna need. Obviously, without extreme, but you know, a stabilization, you know, I would think of one thing of FY 22, it's gonna be our stabilization year. It's not the year that we're gonna grow, it's not the year that we're going to add Mandarin Chinese to our offerings and do all these great fancy things. But if FY 22 is a year that we need to stabilize, I want us to be able to be realistic on what that number is. And then we can go to town and if there's, you know, if there's differences, it's differences and we gotta work our way down. But I'd rather, I'd rather see us kind of, since we don't have a number from the town and we're not gonna get a number from the town because the town can't get one from the state. Let's figure what we need. I don't know. Thoughts?
I love that approach. It's, I, I think it's really very sensitive and it's looking at kind of bringing everything back. To where we need it to be after this, the craziness that was this year. And I, I just, I think it's a really thoughtful approach. You know, I'm 100% supportive of that.
I also really like that approach because as we were talking about level services, I was thinking of all of the cuts that we had to make. To make up for the budget shortfalls and to go into the following year without being open and honest about what we need to sort of come back from that. Would be doing us a disservice, you know, for many years to come. So I, I really do like the thoughtful, about really being honest about what we need to sort of get back to that stabilization.
I agree, and, and you know, I think that the, you know, school administrators need to really think about what. What, what is gonna be needed to try and help. You know, deal with the, the loss of learning that's, that has already happened, that likely will happen this year. You know, what other programming, whether it's summer programming, extended day programming, tutoring. Might be needed. Who knows what kind of grants might be available from the state. But we need to stay on top of that, you know, anytime there's any grant money, we wanna jump on it. But I think, I think we're gonna have to be really thoughtful about what, what's gonna be needed. We definitely do not want large class sizes next year, you know, we want to make sure that, that kids get as much careful attention as they can get.
Um, yeah, I would agree with all this. I think one of the reasons I kind of wanted to get this. Item on the agenda was so that we could have this conversation now because Teresa and Ed and Mike and the administrators need some, some guidance. On our end as to how to proceed with, with the budget. I would agree, we need to work towards stabilization. And to stabilize, the district next year is most likely gonna require an investment beyond level services. And we have to be really upfront about that. Because I think even as we've gone through this, we, you know, we see where, you know, it's been noted that we're, you know, our staff's very lean. And our ability to reallocate positions, you know, is, is not. As easy to do as, as people think, and I think it speaks well to the cooperation and collaboration between the schools and municipal. Side and also to the dedication of the teachers and the administrators in the, in the district. Because we have reduced the budget and it's been done seamlessly. And I think it's been done so seamlessly that people often don't realize the reductions that have happened. So I think having a real upfront, you know, thoughtful. Budget conversation this year is what's gonna be needed. So.
I also want to throw out that, you know, if we start looking in December and think that January 5th and 7th is an extremely aggressive timeline. And we need to wait a few weeks to get, you know. I don't think a couple of weeks will kill us. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, I think we just, we need a number, we need a number voted on in December, but we don't need to have the. The budget overview presentation in January, that early in January, so we can adjust that. I think getting some clarification about the, the CIP process too would be helpful, because I don't think any of us really know what to expect for that, so.
All right. It's gonna be a little concerning because, you know, given what we see coming down the pike for CIP. You know, that the town's not gonna be wanting to spend a ton of money.
There's no money. Unless, if we want clean drinking water, there's no money.
Exactly.
But that's good. I mean, we also need to remember that we often take things out of the operating budget and put it into CIP. So we need to, you know, that also needs to be factored into the budget planning on this end, so.
All right, and so we're meeting with. The three boards next Thursday? Yes, before the FinCom, so I know they're working and putting together the agenda. I gave Frank a little bit of feedback and kind of, you know, I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on assumptions and guesses right now on the revenue's gonna be. Because again, we're gonna be. Guessing and assuming and we're gonna go, we're just gonna go down, plod on our own path right now.
Could you just remind me what time it is on Thursday? We land on five thirty?
I thought it was six, but I don't remember.
Let's see if I actually have it seen.
I just think the date is.
Yeah, I think it's six.
I have six.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments about FY 22? That we, was that helpful, Ed, in terms of our direction?
Yeah, I can, yeah, it's a good idea. I can change those dates and we'll, we'll give them the, yeah, that's good to give the. The administrators the guidance to put in what you need to get us, you know, back to where we want to be. I'm just kidding. We can do that.
All right. All right, next is our school committee business. So. We've got our tri-board meeting. Do we have a meeting? We have, Diane, do we have still scheduled every week?
We are.
Okay. Do we think we need it for next week?
It's coming off the long weekend and that's always, I think, difficult to plan. I mean, we basically need to come up with an agenda tomorrow for next week so that it can get posted by Thursday, right?
Yeah, and I also think being two days before remote starts or hybrid starts, rather. There's maybe some other things that need to be tended to. If, if in fact, we don't need to have a meeting, just might be a very busy, busy time. I'd be more inclined to have a meeting the following week to see how those two days went.
Yeah.
Yes.
I am not available on October 20th for a meeting.
Well, then, that eliminates that.
We had set that evening as being a no-meeting evening.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, we had planned to meet next week, the 13th and the 27th. Now, what do we have for the calendar next week, the agenda next week?
I have one policy. I have the organization chart for this year and then. Possibly voting on the money going to the reserve account. I don't know if that's required next week or.
I think that, that would get voted at the 15th meeting, correct, Kira?
Oh, okay.
Could we meet right before the 15th meeting? To do those, those few things?
I don't know. So we'd have to meet at like five?
Yeah.
We'd have to see what the cable availability is or any other meetings being held.
And I know that we all have six o'clock, or you guys all have six, but for some reason, something's sticking with me that I think Kevin made a comment about getting together earlier than six. Which is the only reason why I had it in my calendar for 5:30. So I just would want us to confirm that. And I could be totally wrong, which would be great, but just not sure.
All right, we can confirm that. All right, so I, I mean, those small items can definitely go to the next meeting, right? We don't need to vote on those for the 27th, right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I just feel so long to go without a meeting. I think that's my only hesitation, but to have a meeting next week just seems. There's pointless. So.
You also have a lot of different subcommittee meetings going on.
Yeah, we do.
Coming up.
Okay, I guess if anybody has any other, I mean, the only other alternative is if we tried to get a slot at some other time that we get a 19th. If anybody feels like we need to do that.
Diane, what, what else is on October? Because then we're jammed up into just having one meeting, right, for the rest of the month?
Yeah. I know you were looking into the student activity.
Yeah.
Policies.
I think we're just trying to avoid, you know, marathon for our meetings because they're very exhausting. Physically and mentally, so it's just hard to, to go through those long meetings. But I don't think there's anything that we need to meet on for the 13th. I guess that's where we're.
Yep. All right, so I guess the 27th it is. You want us to check for the 19th, Monday, the 19th? And we also actually already, several of us are scheduled for the 22nd, 5 o'clock for a policy subcommittee. So I think it would be a matter of finding out if we could get cable on either the 19th or the 22nd. Let's see if we can get it for the, yeah, let's see if the 19th is open.
I have a conflict on the 19th.
All right.
Again, don't pull.
Okay, let's see if we can get to the, let's see what the 22nd can do for us. Although I'm. Let's just see what the availability is in both those days. Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay. And if not, it's the 27th.
And are these meetings gonna be in person? Are we still remote?
So tomorrow night, the select board is going to do their first in-person meeting. I'm hoping to watch to see how they're doing it. It's a combination of what you see here and in person. And they're gonna use the smart board to do, project some of what you're seeing on the screen here. So I, I think we need to see how that goes. It's, it's a pretty big effort and. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not in a hurry. I don't know what you guys, there's, the other thing is, is only limited, a number of people allowed. So you couldn't bring the public in for public speak. They would still have to do that through the go-to webinar, because I believe, based on the number of people, you could only have one or two members of the public at a time in the room.
All right, so let's see how theirs goes. And I would say less October, at least, at least October will stay through remote and we can then discuss it at a future meeting. Does that sound? I mean, I think there's huge benefits to, you know, being able to interact in person, but if we're interacting via computer in person. It doesn't seem to set up the purpose, so. It's not, it's, yeah. Okay, all right, anybody have anything else? I think my only other thought is I have two, actually, one other, actually, I did write down two things. One is, I think what would be helpful on these next meetings. Um, one is, I think what would be helpful on these next meetings, if we could get some type of technology update um, in terms of challenges that people are hitting, things that we're improving, um, where we're at, where that, so if we're, you know, there still seems to be, um, a little bit of buzz about people having technology challenges, so if there's any update that, you know, we've improved things or anything like that. Does that make sense?
So, um, um, just to clarify, so we had it, um, a couple, maybe three weeks ago, so how would we want to make it different this time?
I guess what's new, what's new in the last month, like, so. What's new?
Okay.
Yeah, so it's like, we haven't got to where our baseline is, but you know, we, we know there's still issues, we still hear, you know, people are still dropping Google Meets. Uh, yeah, the Google Meets, there are still, you know, issues of, you know, so what issues are still out there and what improvements are we making?
Okay.
Also, Teresa, I think if we maybe schedule it, like, I agree, we, we probably, we should have another update, but maybe if it's that last week in October, um, because it would be good to get Lori's take on things and how things are working with the hybrid, once we have students in the building and, and they're on the, um, network also, so.
Play.
Does that, does that make sense?
Sure.
Um, and the other thing that's just out there, which I don't know when we want to schedule it, but we, we do need to set the goals so that, um, we can get the evaluation process kind of in place.
That was my, so you covered it.
Sorry.
Perfect.
Okay, from my perspective, you know, I, I would hope that we, we can hold off on that so that your, your focus can get, be on the reopening in hybrid, um, so if it's early November, I think that's fine. I don't, I think, you know, but we just need to get that process in place so that you're aware of the timelines, we're aware of the timelines, and we, we are all in agreement as to how this is going to go forward.
Okay. And just to kind of throw it out there, so we'll, it will meet the twenty seventh, but we are not meeting on November third.
Oh, correct, that's.
Correct.
Yeah. There'll be no meeting. I'm just declaring it.
I, I agree, wholeheartedly.
So then we'll have it, so, just so our thoughts, when we plan that agenda, we just need to keep that. Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I do.
No meeting, no meeting on election day. We did it before.
I think we have to take that day off of work, too.
All right, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor, starting with Lauren?
Aye.
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 Motion vote zero, meeting is adjourned.